Hello everyone, welcome to the third day of International Conference on Human Security and Governance. Today we will start with a special session on food security and governance. This session is organized by Department of International Relations, University of Chittagong, Bangladesh. Convenor of the session is Dr. Sujit Datta, Chairman and Associate Professor, Department of International Relations, University of Chittagong, Bangladesh. Chairperson is Professor Dr. Mohammed Faridul Alam, Professor, Department of International Relations, University of Chittagong, Bangladesh. Co-chairperson Mohammed Abza Lur Rahman, who is Assistant Professor at the same department and same university. Distinguished speaker is Professor Dr. Kamaluddin, who is Professor at the same department of same university. We have total four panelists here. Now, without delaying, I want to invite our distinguished speakers, chairperson and co-chairperson over to you sir.
Further along sir, please.
Yes, welcome all. On behalf of the Department of International Relations, University of Chittagong, Bangladesh, I warmly welcome you all to this special session on food security and governance. In this session, we have with us, Professor Abja Lur of Man, Assistant Professor, Department of International Relations, University of Chittagong. You will be the co-chairperson of the session and also Professor Dr. Kamaluddin of our department of Chittagong University. You will be the distinguished speaker of the session. Today, we have four very important papers to present by four university teachers. I let me name the papers that are going to be presented today. The first one, pandemic acts and food security in the global south navigation, the future will be presented by Mr. Kamru Jaman Bhuia. Mr. Kamru Jaman Bhuia is Assistant Professor, Department of International Relations, Bangladesh University of Professionals in the Chittagong campus. And the second one, the government's role in tackling food adulteration in Bangladesh, prospect possibilities and challenges will be presented by Mr. Abdul Hanaan. Mr. Abdul Hanaan is Assistant Professor of Department of International Relations, Bangladesh University of Professionals, Chittagong campus. And the next one will be presented by Sania Jamal, who is Research Scholar, Jamia Millia Estamiya, University of New Delhi, India. She will be presenting on women, food security and governance. And the last one on impact of food security on human security and sustainable development will be presented by Orkita Singh, who is Research Scholar, Centre for Development Studies, University of Allahabad, Uttar Pradesh, India. So now, I'd like to request Professor Dr. Kamaluddin to deliver his speech as speaker of this session. Dr. Kamaluddin.
Thank you so much, Professor Dr. Faridul Alam for inviting me to share some ideas and views on food security and governance. First of all, I would like to thank you and pay my gratitude to the organizing committee of this wonderful conference. And also, the chair, co-chair and especially the Department of International Relations and all the participants of today's session. Especially, I am surprised why our department has invited me as a distinguished speaker on a such a very critical and complex issues in two days' work like food security and governance. Because I am not claiming that I can pay much attention of the researcher on these issues because this issue is diverse and interlinked with several issues and several research area. However, with my limited expertise, I will try to make clear the concept of food security and governance and how we can and our researcher can contribute in this special theme, especially at the time of COVID-19 and any crisis in the world. I have structured today's lecture in several points, thus I want to share my presentation to the participant. Can you please see the slides?
Yes sir, we can see.
It's visible, sir. It's visible. The presentation is structured by some issues. Primarily, I will focus on the introduction and background of the today's presentation and then I will try to make clear about the concept of food security as well as the concept of food insecurity. And then, I will try to explain how governance and food security is interlinked. Why governance is here? How the strong governance and weak governance can contribute or can, you know, impact on food security and food insecurity? And then finally, I will try to inter, focus on interrelated issues of food security governance. With this structure, I will try to finish my lecture. If we look at the present picture of the two days' work about the excess of food and malnutrition in the world is about 11% and 315 million people are malnutritious. Problem is going on. The number of malnutritious and hungry people in the world is continuously growing on. So, the security of the food is main concern today. If we look at the global south, the data says that 20% of the people of Africa are malnourished and Asian people in 30%. So, you can, you may argue that still 80% of African people have sufficient food and they are having nutritious food. And also, 70, 80, 7% people are quite okay about their food security. But the concept of food security, how they explain the food security is important. I want to give you the truth. If a single person in the world do not have the access of food, we cannot guarantee the security of the food of the overall world. So, the noticeable decline in food security in number of countries in Africa, Southeast Asia and West Asia is evident today. We are not claiming that food insecurity is not exist in the global north, that means global developed world. However, we are claiming that food insecurity are very common in the global south. So, the possibility of eradicating hunger by 2050 be questionable today. So, we need a joint action for solving this problem. So, now I am going to define the concept of security. The food security means when all people at all time have physical, social, economic access to sufficient, safe and nutritious food that meets their dietary needs and food preference for an active and healthy life. Food security is about effort to ensure reliable access to adequate and appropriate food for all. And the access should be adequate and continuous. If you look at, here is a physical, social and economic access to sufficient, safe and nutritious food. We have food, lot of food is there, but we cannot have it, is not nutritious. Due to the climate change, insecticides are used in our food. So, the healthy food is very important in two days' work. With the concept of food security, food insecurity is there. Without understanding the concept of food insecurity, we cannot totally understand the concept of food security. So, what is food insecurity or food security mean? A lack of can trigger the deficit in critical nutrients and calories necessary to fight the beginning of disease and also poor quality can ignite health problems such as obesity, diabetes and hypertension. So, accordingly, access to adequate supply of nutritious, rich food is only, not only social determinants, not only social determinants of public health, but perhaps more important in the age of any crisis like a global pandemic like COVID-19. So, what does food insecurity mean? Food insecurity means is an adequate supply of food, absence of adequate supply of food are some of the time and end. And a supply of food with insufficient nutritional quality of sustain a healthy and active life. I don't want to pay enough attention on this, explaining this two concept. I am going to focus on how these food security and food insecurity are linked with the concept of global governance. Why global governance is required? The governance is required, food security is a global problem. A single country cannot solve this problem. A single actor cannot solve this problem. A single issue is not linked with this issue. So, multiple actors, multiple issues and countries in global north and global south all are responsible for the condition of hunger and food security. So, multiple action and joint action is required and many principles, rules, decision makings are important in solving this problem. So, the academic literature says that concept of governance has been increasingly applied to the notion of food security. I want to quote a definition of food security. Here, all people, we cannot eliminate a single people from that system of food security. All people at all time, not I have food right now, I will not have food tomorrow, no. All time, having physical, social and economic access to sufficient, safe nutritious food to meet their dietary needs and food preference for an active and healthy life. And which is continued by the elements of availability, food access, food utilization and that stability over time. So, how you can manage all of these issues? The issues can be problems can be managed through effective governance system. So, the interaction take place both within and outside food system and cover factors such as food price, agricultural trade, poverty reduction, infrastructure, education and crisis management. That means that any crisis like global pandemic COVID-19, we have data says that due to the COVID-19 food insecurity has become intensified in the countries all over the world, especially countries in global south. In addition to interaction aimed at improving food security, food security governance is about managing the context. We are not saying the managing the context, what does it mean? That is present governance can manage the context of global now. However, the context of global south cannot be managed in existing food security governance. Here, I want to mention that food security governance is about managing the context. It should be context specific in which these interaction take place. And then, finally, food security governance implies rules processing leading to decision regarding food security. In this sense, such a decision may evolve into policies that will need to be monitored and evaluated. It requires advanced screening strategies that involves governance, companies, MNCs, NGOs, civil society and citizens. So, this is the overall picture of having an interlink between food security and governance. Now, I am going to critically assess the present condition of food security governance. If we study critically, we will find that the view of governance as both a challenge and a solution to food security. Number one point, the governance as both a challenge. I have mentioned before that the governance is required for solving the problem. However, now I am claiming that the governance as both a challenge and a solution to food security. We, we are not denying the fact that the governance is a solution of food security. However, we are saying that governance is considered a potential driver of and a potential solution to the of food security. How governance can be challenged for food security or governance can promote food insecurity? That means poor governance constitute main driver of food insecurity. We are claiming that every government even in the global level is there is a food security governance. However, poor governance is existing and prevails in the society, in the country that promote food insecurity. Conflict, lack of institutional capacity, poor policy design. Legging implementation can imply serious harm to the production and distribution of healthy food. And bad governance often has a significant negative impact on food security. The opposite is true for good governance. So, we are claiming, we are trying to this restart. This seminar is for promoting good governance in food security. If we totally claim that governance is not enough for ensuring food security. However, good governance is important and significant and all and it should be context specific and country specific. If we can consider that the equal treatment or equal policy level should be ensured in the food security, we will deny lot of issues in the context of global south, particularly countries in developing countries. The another point is the governability is high degree of complexity. The governance level, you will find that lot of complexity is there. Food security is not an issue that lends itself to being governed easily. We should not say that it can be easily governed. Food security is a highly complex and multi-dimensional issue that is impacted by a lot of drivers and food system activities. Many actors and many actors are involved in food security governance. Thus, it is difficult to identify the main drivers of food insecurity, structural food insecurity, associate drivers and conceptual food insecurity such as hunger-related sardine food fries. So, the food, now we can say that the governability in the food security for the managing this problem is high degree of complexity is there. And food security may weaken the current institutional architecture. If we look at the current institutional architecture of the food security, which addresses and issues as complex as food security does require a sophisticated governance system. The current institutional architecture at global level may be regional level and practices of food security governance and of our recommendation are more for a more active and democratic future governance system. Why I am saying that the democratic future governance system in the food security governance? That means we need to engage the actors from grassroots level to the national, regional and international level. So, the current policies and governance system is not totally educated or is to some extent uneducated to solve this problem. The another issue is highly important that the arrival of new players at food front. We haven't think about the many international player once we set the food security governance and international level. Now, individual can play active role. Disease like COVID-19 plays active role and it destroy the existing structure or architecture of food security governance. So, we need to consider the arrival of new players at the food front. And then, what we need to do? We need to, we are arguing that call for coherency, for ordination across multiple scale. So, the problem is complex, multiple actors are involved. However, good governance and global governance in local, regional and national level is highly important that should have coherency and coordination among the multiple scales and multiple actors. Then, we need to have sufficient resources and integration of democratic values in food security governance. And I have critically assessed the good governance, governance system in the context of food security. So, what would be the our final conclusion? We should be separate from the governance level or we should make strengthen the existing governance system. The answer would be, we should not, we cannot deny the governance to solve this food security problem. So, it's still in conclusion, we can say that the governance is a dominant perspective because governance is as problem solving. So, we need to ensure equitable, equal and good governance. And finally, government has become a popular and much supported notion in food security communities. I think I should stop here. Thank you so much again for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Dr. Kamaluddin for your nice presentation as distinguished speaker of today's session. You have very categorically mentioned about the food security insecurity issues as well as how governance and global governance are involved in these issues. And you have also mentioned how global south and global north are facing different problems regarding food security in their different, from their different point of views. And you have also mentioned brought out the issue of COVID-19. As COVID-19 is one of the reasons for food security, especially in the global south. So, in some of the global northern countries have been the insecurity issue of the food. I would like to add one more issue with your presentation. There is the current Russia and Ukraine problem is also going to create a fast food insecurity for the whole globe and especially for many of the issues, global southern countries will face different problems. Thank you very much and I think in the consequent presentations, different, I think our speakers will speak about these issues. And you have made it, made a very issue on food security and different speakers will speak on, will speak on. I would like to express my thank and gratitude to a good number of participants who have participated today's session. And I would like to say to them to take note and if the participants are interested to speak on the presented issues today, they can make various small comments and also they can have query and questions to our distinguished speakers and presenters, paper presenters at this moment. I would like to invite Mr. Kamru Jaman Bhuia, Assistant Professor, Department of International Relations of Bangladesh University of Professionals at BMA Campus, Chittagong. He will be speaking on pandemic navigation, navigating the future. Professor Kamru Jaman, please try to complete your presentation in eight minutes.
Okay, thank you sir. I believe I'm loud and clear to everyone. Please someone confirm that I'm loud and clear. Yes, yes, you're clear. Okay. So, I'm sharing my presentation with you. So, like this presentation that the time is essence, we are actually running against the clock when it comes to food security and saving the world. So, in my presentation, you will see that there's a key term pandemic X. So, what do I mean by pandemic X? So, pandemic X refers by health expert is, health experts is any disease that may break out in the near future that can be more deadly and more infectious than the current COVID-19. So, if we look into the last 20 years history of the world, we can quite easily identify that we have faced a number of infectious diseases. For example, Ebola, SARS, MARS, swine flu, West And you have also mentioned brought out the issue of COVID nineteen. As COVID nineteen is one of the reasons for food security, especially in the global south. So, in some of the global northern countries have been the insecurity issue of the food. I would like to add one more issue with your presentation. There is the current Russia and Ukraine problem is also going to create a fast food insecurity for the whole globe and especially for many of the issues, global southern countries will face different problems. Thank you very much and I think in the consequent presentations, different, I think our speakers will speak about these issues. And you have made it made a very issue on food security and different speakers will speak on, will speak on. I would like to express my thank and gratitude to a good number of participants who have participated today's session. And I would like to say to them to take note and if the participants are interested to speak on the presented issues today, they can make very small comments. And also, they can have query and questions to our distinguished speakers and presenters, paper presenters. At this moment, I would like to invite Mr. Kamrud Jaman Bhuia, Assistant Professor, Department of International Relations of Bangladesh University of Professionals at BMA Campus Chitogong. He will be speaking on pandemic navigation, navigating the future. Professor Kamrud Jaman, please try to complete your presentation in eight minutes.
Okay, thank you, sir. I believe I'm loud and clear to everyone. Please someone confirm that I'm loud and clear.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yes. So, I'm sharing my presentation with you. So, like this presentation that the time is essence. We are actually running against the clock when it comes to food security and saving the world. So, in my presentation, you will see that there's a key term pandemic X. So, what do I mean by pandemic X? So, pandemic X refers by health expert is, health experts is any disease that may break out in the near future that can be more deadly and more infectious than the current COVID nineteen. So, if we look into the last twenty years history of the world, we can quite easily identify that we have faced a number of infectious diseases. For example, Ebola, SARS, MERS, swine flu, West Nile virus and very recently COVID nineteen. So, one may argue that we got very lucky with those diseases because they were not that infectious or, or they are infectious, but they were not deadly. So, in either cases, we, we were saved. When the COVID nineteen first broke, breakout in Wuhan in back in twenty nineteen, the world was not ready for it, to be honest. Because the architecture, the security architecture that where the global security is going through is not prepared for a pandemic. So, pandemic is not an isolated issue or not an isolated security concern. It's just another dot in the bigger picture. So, food security is just another one. So, I'm not going to reiterate the things that was presented by my previous speaker, Professor Kamal Sir. By defining food security, I believe this is now quite comprehensive, comprehensive by everyone else. But I'm trying to project some figures that actually portray the real crisis that we are on hand. For example, right now, when we are speaking, a single person is dying every single second due to hunger and related issues and nearly eight hundred million suffer. Anyone suffer from malnutrition according to the World Food Programme report. So, nearly one in, in the three people in the world did not have access to adequate food in twenty twenty. And that's an increase almost, we have three hundred and twenty million people in just one year. So, when it was asked to many people in the global south that what do you fear most? Is it global pandemic, COVID nineteen or something else? So, their answer was that hunger will kill us first, then Corona dies. So, so their identification is quite right. But security studies as an academic discipline often fail to identify this very problem that poor people or the people who are the real victims that identify. The state-centric conception of security often downplays the importance of security like food security. We are more concerned about the safety of security. That means the referent object, we often say in our academia, when we try to identify a threat or a security, is often state-centric. So, the critical, from critical perspective, we must argue that this referent object must be widened and must be deepened. What the critical revolution actually asked since the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties. So, now the COVID nineteen has exposed the vulnerability of our food, especially in global south for a number of reasons. So, just to make you understand, look into this particular picture which is produced by FAO. If you, if we look into the severe food insecurity and moderate food insecurity, we can quite clearly see that it is actually concentrated in Africa and Asia, Latin America and the Caribbean where the most of the poorer section of the world's population actually located. But if we look at the very right, we see the north, northern American, the European countries which we called as the global north or the developed world has, hasn't faced this sort of crisis that they are facing. And more importantly, it actually comes down to that classical case of eighty-twenty ratio where the eighty percent of the world's population actually live in the global south who has only twenty percent of the world's resources. And the reversing or the opposite picture actually exists for the global north where they have only the twenty percent of the global population, but they accumulate eighty percent of the global's wealth. Now, the cost of a plate of food around the world, which was estimated by the World Food Programme back in twenty seventeen, we could see that the price is increasingly high in the poorer section of the world. For example, countries like South Sudan, Nigeria, northeast, northeast or Syria, Malawi, Democratic Republic of Congo and these countries. And the COVID nineteen pandemic just exposed it more. The problem was already been there. The COVID nineteen just exposed it and take it to a new level. For example, when the COVID nineteen started to emerge in the African countries, the staple foods which they depend on their most population went high. That means the price of those commodities went high as much as sixty to sixty-five percent. And many people have lost their buying capacity to feed their hungry stomach. So, since the beginning of the twenty-first century, as I mentioned earlier, that diseases has been, has become a regular phenomenon with us and it will continue to do so. There is no denying that this is the end of the history or COVID nineteen is the end game. We are not in the end game. We were in the end game. It's probably just the beginning. So, how can we make ourselves prepared in an insecure world where the food is not secure? By the way, it is important to mention here that there is sufficient food in the world. But the, the one who needs the food, they are not getting it. So, when it comes to food security or insecurity, my previous speaker have covered everything, probably everything from my slide. And I must give credit to him. And I would just add few more things with this, that food insecurity, how it can expose our current security architecture, which will impact the other areas of our security. For example, hunger, famine, poverty and disruption in food supply, they are all interlinked. When the COVID nineteen first emerged, we saw the vulnerability of our supply chain when it comes to food. And obviously, conflict, war and conflict has bigger impact on these issues as well. And when there is a problem with our supply chain in our food distribution as well as our agricultural product, we see that there is a price volatility emerge in market. That means the classical case of demand and supply and the price. That means the demand goes up, the supply goes down, so the buying capacity of most of the people are being lost. And in case those people who have their money in their pockets, they will go for that ultimate option that is panic buying. That's what we have seen before the lockdown, before any kind of strict action that was being taken by governments in global south to cut down the infection rate. We have seen there is a panic buying. The people are storing their food in, in large quantities, which left many people wanting their necessary things. So, food insecurity or food security, if we try to make it a secure world for the future pandemic, we must ensure that there is enough food we have in our storage and the food is being distributed on the basis of equity. That means where the food is needed. And the global south is obviously going to have a serious improvement or lift up when it comes, when it comes down to food security. There are several strategies that may be adopted, but again, it comes down to implication. Because we often see when it comes to security that there is a big gap between reality and perception. So, what we are talking about is actually a kind of a perception or a future scenario. So, what we can do, we can create food alliances like we have vaccine alliances in the global south. Again, again, like the vaccine nationalism, food nationalism is obviously going to work when crisis period emerges. So, the countries, not only the countries, but also non-governmental organization and also international bodies. For example, FAO or World Food Programme, they must enhance their accessibility and their capability and their networks to, to, to make such a structure where majority of the world's population is being fed. Remember, one thing that we must ensure is that in order to fight any future pandemic or any future disease, the first thing that we must have as a weapon is a sound body, is a healthy body. So, in order to do this, we must ensure that everyone is being fed and not only fed, but also being fed with nutritious food. Because if a child is malnourished in its early age, then it will bear the legacy for the rest of his or her life. So, it's a big problem. We need to identify and the sooner we identify, it will be better. And last thing that I would like to conclude to say in my presentation is that COVID nineteen is also exposed the vulnerability of our food culture and also our lifestyle. For example, obesity has increased significantly due to the COVID nineteen. And obesity is related with many health issues like cardiovascular diseases or digestive diseases. For example, peptic ulcers. Now, the deadliest disease that kills more people in the world right now is not COVID nineteen, is not HIV AIDS. It's cardiovascular disease. Globally, annually seventeen point nine million people lost their life due to this cardiovascular disease. And cardiovascular disease is directly related with our food habit and culture. So, along with the practitioners, the policymakers need to identify these issues in order to prepare a better health for us to face the next pandemic. So, that's the end. Thank you everyone for hearing. And if you have any question, I'd like to answer. Thank you.
Kamrud Jaman?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, I'm requesting Abdulhaman to take the responsibility, maybe Professor Fajr Alom, not in the network. Please, continue.
Thank you very much, MD Kamrud Jaman Bhuia for a very wonderful and comprehensive presentations on food insecurity from the global south. And also kind of showcasing the brilliant ideas to solve the future pandemics that are related to the food insecurity. Without further ado, I, I would like to request the next speaker for this session is MD Abdul Hanan, Assistant Professor, Department of International Relations, Bangladesh University of Professionals. He will be talk about the topics unlike the government role in tackling food adulterations in Bangladesh. Prospect, possibilities and challenges. Abdul Hanan, floor is over to you.
We're handing over the floor to me. I think the slide is visible to everyone.
Yes, it's visible. Please continue.
Thank you, everyone. Good morning. Welcome to my presentation. So, as you can see on the screen that my presentation topic is the government's role in tackling food adulteration in Bangladesh, prospects, possibilities and challenges. So, this is the analogy to an area in Bangladesh on various nature. Solutions to paper. These are qualitative research, as you have seen that it, it, it strives to find answer to the question that starts with how, how effective the government measures have been in tackling the problem of food adulteration in the, in the country. At the same time, it's also an explanatory research. Both it has, it is planned that for the research, both primary and secondary data will be, you know, collected. Primary data have not been collected. It, it is in the plan that in the subsequent works, it will be collected from government officials, experts, C-CAB members. That means the Consumers Association of Bangladesh, Association of the Rights of the Consumers in Bangladesh, representative for, from that institutions and some university students to, just to make sure and just to get the ID. Yeah, what, what, what are the thought process? What, what the new universities students think of regarding the food adulteration in the country? And as I was mentioning about food adulteration, let me start with the famous saying by Greek physician Hippocrates who said that food. Unfortunately, we are living in a time when we see our foods cannot serve the purpose of being medicine to us. It, it has lost its medicinal value. At the same time, when we go knock the door of different medicines, those medicine do not offer the optimum level of benefit to us. It's only because of food adulteration. The foods that are adulterated, the same applies to the medicines as well. Medicines are not more medicines and foods are not, no, not anymore really, really foods. In, instead of providing benefits to us, rather they are causing different harms and diseases to us. So, adulterated foods can also be termed as substandard foods degraded or contaminated foods. These are food products which actually fail to meet the legal standard. Sometimes they, they, they lose their value because some things are added to them or sometimes the, 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 some, some, some substances are removed from them. Like, take the example of milk, it can get mixed with the water to increase the quantity. At the same time, the creams can be removed from the milk, from the milk. And you know, sometimes unwanted alternatives are offered to the consumers without their knowledge. In, instead of offering, let's say, the meat of beef, sometimes some meats of some other animals are, you know, offered to the consumers that, that can be visible sometimes in, in, in markets, not only in Bangladesh, in, in throughout the world. You say of preservative chemicals that also makes the food lose its value and makes it adulterated. And usage of pesticides and other chemicals. All these things are done with the intention of making a quick money and profit. So, we see various types of food adulteration in our society, in our market, in the world as well, formally used for we see calcium is used to make fruits ripen. Brick dust, you eat hot raw vegetables. Now, food adulteration in, in more than seventy-six percent food items on the market were found adulterated in a random survey conducted by the public.
Mister Abdul Hanan, for your kind informations, I, I, I just say it would be highly appreciated if you finish within three minutes. That's the message I got from the.
Well, then I need to. Okay, thank you. Then I need to jump to the main arguments. I'll skip these discussions. Okay. These are actually the, the slides that covered the current scenario that's regarding the food adulteration and its implications and harmful impacts upon human bodies in, you know, in our, in our society, in our country. So, okay, so the main point of this paper is to look at the two S's and evaluate the government initiatives. So, what the government can do in such situation, what are the options that are in, in the hands of the government? It can work for awareness building, it can enact laws that can offer, you know, effective punishments for the perpetrators.
Uh that can offer, you know, effective punishments for the perpetrators. It can build institutions that can ensure the standard and value of the food and implement those legal arrangements. It can also increase the technical and technological support for the scientific institutions. Which can ensure the standard of the food and also go for collaboration in the regional and international level. Okay, in the case of Bangladesh, we see that Bangladesh government has explored all these ways to tackle the crisis of. Problem of food adulteration in the country. In the case of legal arrangement, it has, you know, developed safe. Food Act in the year two thousand thirteen and under the act, there is also provision of giving punishment to the people. Who are directly or indirectly involved in the case of food adulteration. Uh you can see there is maximum five years imprisonment or a fine of target ten lock or four. Four persons who are found guilty of food adulteration and this amount of the fine will be doubled in the case of repeating the offense. There are other legal arrangements, I'm not going to discuss in detail about them. So the government has also accepted the framework. Of the B S T I that's called Bangladesh Standards Testing Institute. According to the act, these actually. This institution is the primarily responsible institution for maintaining for for testing. And maintaining the standard of the food. Bangladesh government has also made arrangements for mobile court visits which. Uh out of the clue, all in a sudden go for visits in different food producing agencies, companies, restaurants. And if they find any kind of irregularity, they can offer penalties on the spot to the perpetrators. Uh balance government has also increased the number of testing laboratories in in various parts of the country.
How much time do I have?
You need to finish within a few seconds. You need to finish in few seconds.
Okay. Okay, we see the government has taken sufficient measures, but those measures are not really adequate. Because we see there is the there is involvement of, you know, corruption and the lack of good governance. Sometimes the 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 some bureaucrats despite they take measures, but because of political pressure and other sort of things. But penalties and punishment mechanisms are not implemented properly and the conclusion is that the government has to be. Uh does not, the government does not need to adopt new laws, the existing laws are enough. We what we need exactly is the proper implementation of the laws. Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Professor Abdul Hanan. Very nicely presented your paper and I am extremely sorry that I. Due to a connection problem, I was disappeared for a few minutes and thank you very much. Abdulrahman for taking over in my absence. So now I would like to request Sunil Jamal. Uh research scholar Jamia Emilia Islamia University, New Delhi, India. Uh to present her paper on women's food security and governance. And Professor Sunny, Sunny, you need to. In four to five minutes, as we have.
Uh good morning everyone. Am I audible?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to present my paper on women's food security and governance. As we have known very much things about the food security by the earlier presentations now. I have given a limited span of time and I have to justify my presentation in that. So food is a basic need for the human sustenance and livelihood. Abraham Maslow in his theory of hierarchy of needs that given that food security. What is the basic needs through which he can achieve motivation and other needs. Uh there are various international conferences held throughout the world where food security has became a major. A major concern all over the world and as well as on the national as well as the. The United. Comits had declared that every man, woman, child has inalienable right to be free from hunger. My nutrition in order to develop their mental and physical faculties. Food for women is not only a human right, but a weapon to assert her status and position in the society. Food for women is not mere a need for living, but a duty is bound to her as a mother. For the future progress and development of the country. Women in India have experience and I am right to say in India. I think women all over the world have seen a long history of discrimination. She is bound everywhere in the shackles of patriarchy. Domination and servitude. So linking women environment segment to the women food security. Uh there there are various policies and governmental programs which had empowered women. Through social, economical and their political prospects to assert her empowerment through food. Is a major policy of area which has which has a major challenge in today's time to be looked on. Uh social research attitude of a think tank of Delhi had found that sixty five percent of the men. Were the first person who eat in the in the family first and then came the women of the family. Who eat the leftovers food which are which which is not good for their hell or health and nutrition. So they are provided the less nutrition with. On the norms attached to the food security of a woman. In India, malnutrition and anemia is very much prevalent. Girls less than eighteen years struggling themselves with their body development pressurized to give birth to the malnourished children. While the labor pain and the loss of hemoglobin, interestingly, one one lakh twenty thousand women die every year. The condition is much deteriorated among the tribal and the poor family household. They serve more severe anemia and chronic energy deficiencies.
Sorry for interruption. Can you please complete in one minute?
Okay, sir. Though India has given the landmark which we come to India. When it has made the food security as the right to food security by the by the National Food Security Act two thousand thirty. Which made women which which has given us important segment to the women empowerment to it where eighteen years of the women. Will be given, will be authorized Russian in her in her name. It are a very significant role to be in the society to to upgrade her status. And various schemes like integrated child development scheme and P D S, public distribution system. And medium meals, these these are the three schemes included in National Food Security Act through which women can attain the food security. And can and can get away from the shackles of the of the issues and challenges related to do. There are much things to 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 add tell, but I will definitely include it in my paper and thank you for patiently listening me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sunil Jamal. And I think it was a very nice paper and waiting for word. To read the full paper, published paper. And I am very sorry that I could not give you much time for your presentation. And now I would like to request Arpita Singh, Research Scholar, Centre for Development Studies, University of Allahabad. Uh Uttar Pradesh, India, to present her deliberation on in in four to five minutes, please. Or Peter. Or Peter Singh, are you here?
Uh good morning, sir. Yes, sir, I can hear. So how I present my P P T on your screen? How I can share it?
Then share your screen. I already made you co-host, so you can share your screen now.
Is it visible?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Myself, Arpita Singh, my presentation is on impact of food security. Uh on human security and sustainable governance. The paper is divided into four parts. Where understanding food security, food security and human security linkages, impact of food security on an individual security. And sustainable governance and key findings and suggestions. Firstly, here I describe what is food security. The term is, the term food security is convergence of two terms, food and security, which means a person is feel food secure. Uh when feels food secure when in terms of availability, accessibility and affordability of food. Is known as a healthier, happier and peaceful person. Nineteen ninety six word food submit address that food security includes. Both the physical and economic access of food that meets the needs of the present and saving for the future generations. To meet their own needs. Since nineteen forty five, every year around on sixteenth October, what food day celebrated. And in India after act after after N F S A National Food Security Act two thousand thirteen. Food security is known as an act to provide food for food and nutritional security in human life cycle. Uh approach by ensuring access to educate in quantity of quantity and quality of food. At affordable prices to people to live a life with dignity. This food is a basic human rights as stated by F A O. Food as long served as a career of culture in human society and has been a driving force for globalization. Uh in nine twenty twenty, with the global food food, global food hunger index report ranks India one hundred one out of one sixteen qualified. Uh countries with a score of twenty seven point five, India suffers from a level of hunger that is serious. Uh almost one one fifty million children according to F A O around the countries are stunted. Because of lack of proper nutrition and approximately eight hundred million people are still sleeping hungry without taking basic meal per night. My next slide is impact of food security and food security and human security interlinkages. The linkages in my paper presents the linkages between human security and food security. Uh that means all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. As U N G, United Nations General Assembly Resolution, so it's sixty six by two ninety. Uh in twenty twelve recognizes the concept of human security as an approach to bring together the concept of human right. Development, peace and security. Does human rights can be defined? As the right of all people to live in freedom and dignity, free from poverty and disappear. As also article three has stated. Everyone has the right to life, liberty and security as a person. This realization of human security right to educate food is known as a fundamental human right to live with dignity and peace. This notion of human security is all about people centered, context specific and all inclusive and prevention oriented. And the core reason of development of human security approach is to accomplish the person's basic needs. Like was providing nutritious food for active and healthy life and makes them freer- freedom from fear, hunger and. And dignity, able to support new marginal communities and societies. And does food security mean fulfilling the objective of human security? Yeah, like many policies are implemented by government of India for securing everyone's right to life by right to food. Since two thousand thirteen.
Or Peter, sorry for interruption. Can you please complete in next one minute?
Okay, sir. Uh as Maslow's theory of hierarchy needs, where he discusses about an individual needs or needs of human beings. It is a five time model of human, it's in a pyramid shape that these needs are reason of an individual's existence. If one of them is not functioned properly, the one of them is not functioned properly, the human needs will be correct. That these five tire models are based on. Uh self actualization, self esteem, love belonging, safety and physiological needs. The impact of food security and human security and sustainable governance due to food insecurity, not just health of human being is getting affected. But the survival of our planet is also suffering by this issue. Measured drivers of food insecurity are population growth. Or a climate change, we should measure that how food is grown, produced and distributed and consumed or how much and how many times it is wasted. All of these have major impacts in the food system of the world and sustainability. Uh if we want to make sustainable development or sustainable environment for our planet or for ourselves, we need to address the issues. Related to food insecurity and sustainability. Uh whatever for sustainable development, we need governance to behave like one. Sustainable development is only possible if all governments. Will have capacity to build a smooth and stable economic relations between countries or across the countries of the world. Supporting each other's right to live through economic stability. Here I'm concluding my topic. Yeah, through key findings and suggestions. In India, the system of P D S is working under forty hundred fair. Lack fair price shops according to U N E P in food waste index report, every year approx one third of the food produced. In the world for consumption and one point zero three billion tons gets pasted. And it is costing the global economy closely to dollar nine hundred, nine hundred forty billion each year. Does every year consumers in rich countries waste almost as much as food that produced in Sub Saharan Africa like two thirty million tons. Top five countries of listed in global food crisis, global food waste report in twenty twenty one are China, India, US, Japan. And Germany. Thus, we need to establish resilient food system like twin tech approach as established by F A O. With that to support the agriculture productivity, processing and measuring the food waste. We should provide immediate relief to the vulnerable population and we should implement some specific policies to combat situation like COVID nineteen pandemic. To ensure food security to all as well as protecting their rights to live with peace and dignity. This we should learn from this current situation which is already wasn't the word of hunger. Thank you, sir. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Arpita, for your nice presentation. At this moment, I would like to thank all the presenters. Mr. Kamru Jamon Bhuya, Abdulhanan, Sunny, Jamal and Arpita Singh for your excellent presentation. And I would also like to convey my special gratitude to Professor Dr. Kamaluddin for excellent deliberation as honorable. Uh speaker of this session. At this moment, I would like to hand over the floor to Professor Abdulrahman. Of the Department of International Relations of Chittungang University for his vote of thanks and concluding the today's session. Thank you so much for my part.
Thank you very much. It's my immense pleasure to express my boot boot of thanks on behalf of interdisciplinary institute of governance. And 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 human security and governance, New Delhi, India and and especially thanks to the Department of International Relations. University of Chittungang. I'm expressing my deep gratitude to all the esteemed speaker in this session. Very special thanks to the keynote speaker of this sessions, Professor Dr. Kamaluddin for highlighting. All the important topics about the global security that are related to the, I mean, I said that governance from the perspective. By specific perspectives on political understanding and also perspectives from the global south. Uh if I move to the other specific speaker, I I just say this session is especially conducted by the Department of International Relations. University of Chittungang and directly I I say supported by the one of the conveyors of this program conference. Professor Dr. Sudhi Dutt, the chairpersons of the Department of International Relations, University of Chittungang. And I I I must say thank you to the chairpersons of the sessions, Professor Mohammed Fardul Alom. If I move to the, I I I say that for the speakers in this main station, they brilliantly did incredible job. I dear presentation is, I I I said very comprehensive and we got a number of policies, additions and new ideas. Uh probably I say that will uh pro- definitely benefit given most, I I say the input to the government. Uh in 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 different part of the world and also the other organizations like international organizations. If I move to the first speaker, MD Kamru Jamon Bhuya, who highlight on the food insecurity net. I say very, in a very unconventional, I I say that in a different way, in a new, in a new, I I say the new lens of. Seeing the event of food security to the mixes of, I said, the knowledge from the health expert. And also the international relations and security perspectives. He highlight the the perspectives from the global south, how they will face problem in future. If we are not taking sufficient measures to tackle this. Moving to the next speaker mainly highlight the Abdulhanan. Uh he highlight the food adulterations problem, specific case he highlighted from Bangladesh, how the country is facing. And how they are taking the short term policies that have a low force and and mainly lingering the problem. And next speaker, Sunny Jamal, she highlighted women's food insecurity and governance. She she mainly highlighted the cases of India, how this type of food security simultaneously impact the women in India. Uh and finally, finally, the last. And finally, finally, the last speaker, Orpita Singh, Orpita Singh of highlighting the food security is her concern most about the India, but she not only focus on in she she not only focus in India. She also highlighted the case from Africa, how they are facing a problem with the food insecurity and security issues. And she focus on the sustainable governance with with all those things, highlighting all those things I say. My humble gratitude to the conference committee to giving me this opportunity to express my good thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Abdul. Thank you, Abdul. And thank you. And very welcome to all the participants from the Department of International Relations University of Chittagong, Bangladesh. So I'm just going to the our non daily, please take about the time.
Thank you, Dr. Sudhi Dutt. Thank you, Department of International Relations University of Chittagong for collaborating with us and for conducting the special session food security and governance. Thank you, Professor Dr. Mohammed Fardul Alom, Professor Dr. Mohammed Kamaluddin and Mohammed Avzalur Rahman and all the panelists for this wonderful session.